I'd like to call the January fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Freyland.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
First order of business is council minutes of the meetings of December seventh and December tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes of December seventh and tenth, December tenth.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freyland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next are matters of special privilege, and we have several today. The first is an excellence in service to Williamsburg, and this is a particularly important award because it comes from the peers within the employees of the city. And this is an award in excellence for service to Williamsburg presented to Edna Malpass. And Edna, if you would meet me at the podium. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the proclamation, and then let you say a few words, and then we have a plaque for you as well.
Ms. Edna, for your turn.
And this is, "The City of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Edna Malpass for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Edna Malpass has served the City of Williamsburg with dedication and compassion for twenty-three years as a senior eligibility worker for the Department of Human Services. As the lead worker for the eligibility team, she assumes multiple responsibilities for interpreting and implementing federal policies for the eligibility unit, distributing workload to eligibility workers, assisting with in-house training, and ensuring quality customer service for all benefit programs applicants. She is a strong team player, not only in the department but also in the city, offering her time and assistance to employees or residents in needs, particularly those who are elderly or incapacitated. Over the years, Edna often has given of her own time visiting a number of elderly or disabled city residents who need a hand or just to be with a caring person. Edna is a highly motivated professional, a team player, and a role model who puts into daily practice the quest principles of commitment, dependability, and service to the community. Being an eligibility worker is not just a job but a passion for her because she sees it as an avenue to help people through difficult times. Edna Malpass is hereby recognized for her commitment to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the City of Williamsburg, dated the day January fourteenth, and signed by Mia's mayor and Marvin Collins, the city manager."
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Peter Wallantish, Christopher Cowell, and my whole, all of my coworkers, because at Human Services, we work as one team to help our citizens in the city, and we try to show them compassion and respect and see that they are helped in the best way possible. Thank you.
Next, we have a certificate for the Police Department. Chief Slowey. This is a certificate of advanced meritorious accreditation, given to the Police Department in July two thousand and fifteen. This is the ninth time they've received this award, and it says, "Williamsburg, Virginia Police Department, having fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence by living up to a body of standards deemed essential to the protection of life, health, and safety and the rights of citizens it serves, and having exemplified the best professional practices in the conduct of its responsibilities for over fifteen years, is hereby upon the recommendation of the members of the commission awarded this certificate of advanced meritorious accreditation." Chief, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Mr. Collins, for supporting us in this endeavor, once again. I'd like to just talk a little bit about what Kalia is. A lot of people here and at home probably don't know. Back in the seventies, sixties, late sixties and seventies, there was a lot of unrest in our communities, and law enforcement was not really on top of its game back then. So, a couple of things occurred at the end of the Johnson administration, a program called LEAP, Law Enforcement Assistance Program, which started to help educate the officers. They didn't just have to be big and strong anymore, they needed to be smart. As a result of that, we have, most of our officers now have bachelor's degrees, and three or four of them have master's degrees, so we've come a long way. As a result of some of that education, people started saying, "Well, how are we going to become a profession?" All professions had some type of accreditation. Law enforcement did not. So, four groups got together, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the International Association of Sheriffs, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Officers, and the Professional Executive Research Forum, Police Executive Research Forum, who, the gentleman that was going to be here today, Chief Myers, from Newport News, couldn't make it. He wanted me to tell you he was sorry he had a couple of major incidents in Newport News, but he's actually the Kalia Commissioner right now, so he was going to come here and present it to us. But Kalia is the gold standard for the administrative of law enforcement in the United States. It requires agencies to meet state-of-the-art standards in several areas: policy and management, administration, operations, and support services. We get assessed on that every three years, and we have people we don't know come to look over those standards. Those standards change every four months continuously, so we're having to keep up with them. In nineteen eighty-three, Debbie Middlebrook, who's our accreditation manager, and myself, I think we were the last two that remained from the first time we sat down at the table over in Chief Wardell's office, and decided if we were going to tackle this. And we did, and in nineteen eighty-seven, we were accredited for the first time. Very fortunate in our mind to do that. There are eighteen thousand agencies, police agencies, in the United States. There's six hundred and forty-five of them that are nationally accredited. That's about three point six percent. That's good for us, that's good for our community, and ensures that we maintain best practices in law enforcement and continually change as we move on. I have to say thank you to several people. Give me a minute, Mayor. First Debbie Middlebrook, who is also the longest-standing, continuous accreditation manager in the country.
Wow.
(applause) That's exactly what happened in Miami. One of the terrible things we had to do was go to Miami to receive this award. You do what you have to do. But that's exactly what you just did. It's the same thing that happened when we were in front of the commission for Debbie. So Debbie, thank you for all the tedious work. I'd like to thank the supervisors of the Williamsburg Police Department and all the senior officers who ensure that we comply with this on a daily basis, and it is daily. Inspections, reports, everything happens on a daily basis. And as much, the officers of the Williamsburg Police Department who actually perform the task in line with those orders to the best practices of law enforcement. I'd like to thank again Mr. Collins and City Council, and lastly, the citizens of the City of Williamsburg for supporting us. They were actually involved in our process and our assessment, and we appreciate that very much. So, thank you for your time.
Chief, congratulations. Debbie, you want to come over here and help hold this? Again, this is a real honor for the city and a testament to our Police Department, top to bottom, for what a terrific job they do. I'd like to do one more matter of special privilege, and this is something both happy and sad for the city. It's happy because I'd like to congratulate Jody Miller on being hired as the Deputy County Administrator for Durham County, North Carolina, which is about ten times the size of Williamsburg, so you've got quite a job ahead of you. It's sad because she's going to be leaving, and I'm going to order the Police Department to not let you leave town.
(laughter)
Jody's been with the city for fifteen years, starting as an intern and rising to Deputy City Manager, and throughout that time, she's just shown exceptional skill and performance in her job, and we can't thank her enough. The list of accomplishments goes on, but let me just mention a few that I think have been particularly important for the city. One of the things Jody did was take the lead on working with the city and the Housing Authority to create a blended model for the provision of housing services, which I think provides a model for cities and communities across the country. And Jody deserves an incredible amount of effort. Our thanks for the effort that went into that. And I know at times you were saying, "Why did you do this to me?" But basically, I think we've ended up in a really terrific place, and a lot of that is because of your efforts. I think many people may not know this, but Jody played a critical role in leading the consolidation of the transportation system into what is now WADA, that brought together Colonial Williamsburg, the College, the city, James City County, and created a unified transportation system. She served as Chair of that board for a number of years. She also was instrumental in getting the Williamsburg Farmers Market off the ground and served as the Chair of that board for a number of years. For the city, she managed federal and state grants for the Transportation Center and for the Braxton Court Project. She's led the Employee Health Initiative and also led the new Child Health Initiative that we're just undertaking. She's also led the city's Green Team and secured lead certification for various city buildings that were constructed. For City Council, she's essentially been the leader of the GIO process, the Strategic Planning Process, and also coordinating the citizen surveys that really give us input on how we're doing, and we appreciate that. Those are just some of the highlights. Jody has been an instrumental part of this community for fifteen years, and we will miss you, but we congratulate you and wish you all the best in the future. Jody, thank you very much. Next order of business is background presentations. I believe we have none at this point, and that leads us to public hearings, of which we have three. The first is a public hearing, PCR fifteen dash twenty-six, the James Blair Middle School Special Use Permit. Sheriff, welcome.
Members of council, as you just suggested, just stated, Williamsburg-James City County Public Schools is requesting a special use permit for a new middle school to be constructed in two phases at one oh one Long Hill Road. This is an aerial, current aerial of the site. Over here is where the new Aldi is being constructed, the gas station, CVS, Long Hill Road, Ironbound Road, and this is the James Blair Middle School in Cooley Field. This is a close-up that shows the old school and the central office area, as it currently exists. This is a site plan of the new middle school for Phase One. Phase One will accommodate six hundred students with an anticipated opening date of two thousand and eighteen, which will consist of demolishing the auditorium, the gym, the cafeteria, the media center, and the band and choir areas. The school board's central office will remain open in the annex building during this phase. As you can see, that's the annex building, and that's the new middle school, Phase One. Phase Two will add three hundred students and will consist of demolishing all remaining portions of the existing building, including the school board's central office. Cooley Field will remain in both phases, with the anticipated opening date for Phase Two being two thousand and twenty-three. Their future locker building is also shown adjacent to Kiwanis Park, and a detailed description of the proposed middle school and its phasing was included with my memo. Kimble Horn was selected to conduct a traffic impact analysis of the site, and the executive summary was included in my memo. This study analyzed existing traffic conditions and the impacts of the proposed development on adjacent roads, and recommended improvements to the existing roads affected by the redevelopment of the site to a fully functioning six hundred and ultimately nine hundred student middle school. Included in the analysis is the improvement and relocation of the Ironbound Road and Long Hill Road intersection to the rest, and that's the intersection, which includes a signal. This intersection is improvement, is in the city's capital improvement plan, and its location was also included in the site plan approval for the Aldi supermarket across the street, which is under construction. The city anticipates that the construction of the intersection changes will begin in April twenty seventeen and will be coordinated with the middle school construction work. Under Phase One, the new middle school will be served by two site access driveways along Long Hill Road, one here for the buses and one here for student drop-off. Two access points are proposed along Ironbound Road, one using the existing driveway access that serves as the main entrance to the property today, which will be converted to a right-in, right-out, to mitigate operational concerns along Ironbound Road and to ensure no adverse impacts to the proposed relocated Long Hill-Ironbound Road singleized intersection. The existing staff parking lot entrance will be improved to current standards for site line and site distance improvements to enhance safeties of drivers exiting the site under Phase One. So, this is the Phase One. For parent drop-off, you can come in and come around and come in, and either can go back this way to go to Long Hill, come to the singleize, or if you want to come out Ironbound, you have a right-in and a right-out on it. Under Phase Two, the two access points and their function along Long Hill Road and the right-in, right-out along Ironbound Road are expected to remain unchanged. However, there are two scenarios for the school site access at the second driveway along Ironbound Road that may result in potential changes to operations and/or driveway locations under Phase Two. Scenario one is to upgrade and relocate the staff parking lot access on Ironbound Road approximately seventy-five feet east of the current location to align with Middle Street, as you can see here, Middle Street. Changes to the Middle Street leg of the intersection will remove the right-in, right-out-only restriction, which will result in a full movement intersection with those exiting Middle Street and the school staff parking lot stopping before entering Ironbound Road. Scenario two is, envisions the possibility of a new roadway connection between the school property and a singleized intersection at Traver Drive and Ironbound Road. So, Phase Two is looking at doing the improvements to here. This requires the construction of a new roadway on College of Women Mary property through the Dillard Complex, which is identified as future athletic complex in the college's master plan. This scenario has been in early discussions with college officials, but details have not been worked out and approved by all parties as of this date. If this connection were to occur, the existing staff parking lot access driveway along Ironbound Road would close due to the new singleized intersection at Traver Drive. So, the existing one would close, and you would use the singleized intersection. With the planned improvements to Ironbound Road and Long Hill Road intersection, and the planned improvements on school property, traffic operations are expected to be within acceptable ranges regardless of the additional or new traffic generated by the proposed middle school. The consultant notes that due to these normal increases in traffic volumes and non-peak hour operational impacts, no physical capacity enhancements or improvements are proposed for the adjacent streets or study area intersections. The Board of Designing Appeals approved a height variance to increase the height from forty-five feet for Phase One of the project last October. Phase Two will also require a height variance if the building exceeds forty-five feet. As noted in the attached project narrative, the Williamsburg-James City County Public Schools, after working with city and county staff to determine if other lands was available to accommodate a new middle school and finding none, has determined that the James Blair site is the appropriate site for the new middle school. The architect was hired in two thousand and fifteen to design the new two-phase middle school on the James Blair site that is the subject of this application. A major issue for the new middle school is traffic, and this has been addressed by the Kimble Horn Traffic Study, as previously discussed. As part of the traffic improvements, the city will begin construction of a new traffic light and intersection improvements at Ironbound and Long Hill Roads in April two thousand and seventeen, as recommended by the Capital Improvement Plan. The Phase Two site plan provides an alternative of connecting to the Traver Drive-Ironbound Road singleized intersection if details can be worked out with the College of Women Mary. This slide shows a new ten-foot shared-use path through the site from Long Hill to Ironbound Road, and that's through the school. The shared-use path will connect to the shared-use path on Long Hill Road that is proposed by the city in the two thousand and seventeen, and to the future shared-use path along Ironbound Road between the school and Dupue Drive that will build in the future as an Ironbound Road improves. So, the future is to complete it all the way to Dupue Drive. Phase One will contain two hundred spaces with one hundred and eighty-eight required, and Phase Two will contain two hundred and forty-seven spaces. The parcel will contain approximately seventy-five percent open space in Phase One and sixty-eight percent in Phase Two. As you can see in this, trees are provided, both along Ironbound and Long Hill Road, as well as shrubs, water and sewer available to the site. Stormwater management will be handled by BNP at the rear, down in this area, and by a retention area up This is the Phase Two, which shows the two, the final build-out of the building with the removal of the annex building. And this is a conceptual elevation of the front of the school. Since this property is not located in an architectural review or corridor protection district, ARB approval is not required. Therefore, Planted Commission held a public hearing on December the sixteenth, other than the applicant and the applicant's representative. No one spoke at the public hearing. Planted Commission recommended by a vote of six oh that a special use permit be approved for a new middle school at one oh one Long Hill Road, as shown in Phase One and Phase Two conceptual plans, with two conditions, one being the installation of the traffic improvements in Phase One and Phase Two, as recommended by the Kimble Horn Traffic Study, and two, approval of a height variance by the Board of Designing Appeals prior to the construction of Phase Two. That ends my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Also present today are Allen Robinson, representing the school, Howard Collins, the architect, and Carol Collins with Kimble Horn, if you have any specific questions for them.
Carolyn, thank you very much for a really terrific and thorough discussion of a complex issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me turn to council for any questions before I open the public hearing.
Sure. Carolyn, is it correct to say that on the two scenarios in Phase Two for the teacher-administrator lot, that Scenario Two is the more desirable, but because of the lack of certainty about the college granting access to their property, then Scenario One is the fallback?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
In the traffic impact analysis executive summary, there's a bullet about coordinating singleized intersections along Ironbound Road. I assume that to mean including the intersection with Richmond Road?
Yes. We're looking at, we're doing the improvements, looking at the improvements to this section currently, so this coordinates with the school development.
Correct. No questions? Jerry?
Carolyn, the parking, the faculty-staff, is that also where a parent parks if they come to volunteer, for example?
That's, I mean, that's correct, yes.
I mean, there are sufficient spaces for...
And for school open houses and those types of things.
That's the parking for that.
Well, you have parking here, and you have parking here, and you have parking...
There is parking, and that's, there's parking up there where the...
There's parking up front, yes. There's some parking up front, and there's parking here and here, and I believe that they mentioned they probably would use the bus turnaround area for large events also. Is that correct?
School events, sports events, you have a bus stop area, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this can come forward. I have four speakers cards, and we'll go with those first, and then if anyone else wishes to speak, please come forward and state your name. First card I have is Dr. Don Cherry. You can come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Don W. Cherry, resident for, of the area for almost forty years. Have a dental practice at twenty-two, twenty-five South Hendrick Street. I've been located there for over twenty-five years. I'm a volunteer at Old Town about once per month for over twenty-five years. I've served on the Historic Area Bicycle Area Committee for over twenty-five years, and I was very instrumental, along with Tris McConnell and Alex Curris, in getting the bicycling facility started here about twenty-five years ago. I'm also a member of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Commission, and I got to be real good friends with Dwight Farmer, and I feel like I was an instrumental factor in helping to get I-64 started by asking for so many studies on it. Okay, I want to address the, you know, all this is nice, but the question is, do we really need it? I want to know, how many of you have been into the schools, all three middle schools? How many of you been into every little nook and cranny, into every, behind every door, been up on the roof of all three schools? I dare none of you have done that. Wade Swink and myself, a member of the committee that were looking at the school finances, we did that for all three schools. And what we found, we were amazed. The taxpayers are paying for schools to be fully utilized. Are they being fully utilized? My analogy, what if we have a six-lane highway out here on Route sixty-four, and we only use four lanes a day, and the taxpayers came to you and asked for two more lanes? What would you say? Would you ask the taxpayers, "Build two more lanes"? We have a classroom utilization problem of only seventy-five percent, according to the DeJong study, and that's a study that was instituted by the school system itself. Classrooms are only utilized four out of six periods per day. Only seventy-five percent is the utilization rate at Berkeley Middle School, because the classrooms' fifth and sixth periods are not utilized. So, would you ask the taxpayers to put up another school when we're not fully utilizing the schools we have? Classrooms used only four periods, and we have six periods. We build these schools for six periods. Ladies and gentlemen of City Council, we don't have a capacity problem. we don't have a capacity problem. We have a scheduling problem. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Don, thank you very much. The next speaker's card I have is Jay Everson.
I'm Jay Everson, 103 Branson Boulevard in the county. I have some handouts here to pass around. Oh, Don, you forgot to have glasses. I'm here to talk about the James Blair situation also. I remember when I was on the Planning Commission, the late nineties, you'd have rezoning or special use permits such as this come up, and speakers would get up and say, "We don't need this." And I often thought to myself, you know, if the private sector's coming forward with this and they determine need, does it fit the land use, et cetera? So, I find myself in a position today of starting out like I used to think, "Why are they saying this to me?", by saying, "Do we in fact need this?" Now, what's happened over time, back in 'oh seven, De Jong and Healy, which is now Future Think, presented to the county and to the city basically a middle school capacity apocalypse. And the city and the county got together and built Lawrence Hornsby Middle School. Then when Hornsby Middle School went to open up, they started looking around, and there wasn't enough kids to fill up four schools. And because of the county financial crunch with the recession of 'oh nine, they decided to move all the kids to the newer facility and consolidated all the rental space into James Blair Central Office. Then about 2012, you start hearing this stuff again. But when you start looking at the Future Think projections, which I have provided to you, you start seeing that the enrollment projections haven't worked out. They've overshot. And basically, what you've got going on here is if you, when you open this school up in 2018, you'll have two hundred and forty-six kids more projected in 2015 than the current capacity of twenty-five seventy-one. This is a six-hundred units, six-hundred-student school. So, you'll be at forty-one percent full. Now, the reason I gave you this chart is because there's a track record here of having projections that are higher at each of these landmarks here in Dayton than actually has happened. And the numbers tend to come in on the low-end projection, not the most likely. And the low-end projections of the Future Think have been eliminated. They have the most likely. Now, the reason it's important to me to bring the question about need of the school is because people in that know that that particular series of intersections, Ironbound and Richmond Road and Long Hill and Ironbound, are challenged already. And it was pointed out in the staff's presentation that there had been this big search to find other locations. Now, that may be true, I don't know. I'm skeptical, but that's okay. But, in May of 2013, when the Middle School Facility Study Committee came out, they had, their second recommendation was to expand the three existing middle schools that were grade four-hundred-and-forty-four, four-hundred-and-forty-four student additional capacity, which just happens to match up pretty close to what is going to be projected right now in 2024 and 2025. Because in 2025, in September, we're going to, they're projecting to have absolutely less middle school children than September of 2024. That's the projections. Now, if you build a school, and you saw those traffic realignments here, and the report, the traffic study says it won't be above, it won't be, you know, any worse than E or D or E, I think is what it said. That's pretty, pretty low standard. But the thing I've been thinking about, if you look at the traffic study, it says that they're going to have a turn, they're going to put, what do you call it? Striped turn lanes for the buses because the traffic people were concerned that the buses would stack up to make a left turn coming from Ironbound into the school parking lot and would back up and block the right end and left end for student drop-off in the morning. So, what they propose to do is to put those stripes to come out, you know, come out so that the buses won't all stack up in a row, blocking that intersection. Now, you're all familiar with the intersection of 199 and Jamestown Road, in particular, the prohibition on left turn in and left turn out on 711. Take away those left turn in, left turn out, and double, you know, basically double the action. And you're going to get, which you're going to have, the people want to come out of the James Blair drop-off, which is stackable for fifty cars. Fifty cars, three-hundred-and-sixty in the morning, coming in there, and it's going to be crunch time. It's not over an hour or two because you can't drop the kids off much more than fifteen minutes before school. So, you can see that there's going to be an influx of major traffic there all at once. And the buses stack up, they can't all get in the turn, they start coming out, blocking the traffic. If you come out of the, as proposed, out on the Long Hill Road and you want to take a left, you're going to have this conflicting motion, coming like this and turning in left. Plus, you've got the right through and the right turn only. All this is in conflict with the ends of buses sticking out at the end. Read the report, this is what it says. Now, if there was no other options, okay, I get it, we can live with it. But this is a twenty-eight million dollar option with horrific traffic situation. When there's a fourteen, under fourteen million dollar option for extending existing middle schools, and I can't believe they're cutting, they're knocking down the annex if they ever get to Phase Two. My middle son was in the first class that was in the annex in the eighth grade way back when. I urge you, not only to save the taxpayers money, but to not let this traffic nightmare become a reality. Thank you very much, I know I'm way over my time. You're very kind to let it pop freely, I appreciate it.
These are important issues, Jay, thank you very much. The next speaker's card I have is Petra Nadal. Petra, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Petra Nadal, I live at 106 Indian Circle. I'm going to, as a parent and a citizen, I just have a few thoughts to share. I have gone over my notes from the past two years, and I still have way more questions than I have answers. I cannot find any push by the Williamsburg-James City County Schools to seriously look for future school property sites. If they were so concerned, I would have expected more effort to have been put into it then. I could not find an article in the Virginia Gazette or Daily Press that thoroughly reported on the need of a new middle school and its planned location. Who is pushing a new middle school, and specifically the James Blair site? I know several other options were put forth for alternate school sites. Why weren't those suggestions compared to the James Blair site or even given to the public? I have attended school and county board meetings where citizens like Jay Everson, Chris Henderson, and other knowledgeable, well-informed and budget-minded citizens have given great suggestions, which were sound and thoroughly thought through, but no reply. I can get through, I can't get it through my head that we are going to push an additional middle school through, knowing full well that the new data contradicts the need for it. Why is the data being ignored? Wouldn't it be wiser and more cost-effective to cut losses now? Stop, reevaluate what is truly needed. We could add on to the existing schools, change the master scheduling, just to name a few. Have the two boards actually made a list of the pros and cons of a new middle school, as well as a list of the pros and cons for the James Blair site? Have those lists been made available to the public? I, for one, would like to see such a graph. Before we spend any more money on a new middle school, something so simple can be an eye-opener. There are many things that need to be considered. The traffic should be near the top of that list. What will the cost of all the traffic changes be? Who foots the bill for all the changes and additions? And anything else coming up down the road that's not even been mentioned yet? How do all the local businesses feel about all that traffic? How are the local neighborhoods going to deal with additional traffic coming through their quiet neighborhoods? Yes, schools are great for property value, but can also lower property value if traffic dominates their quiet neighborhoods. As a parent who dropped off her kids off at Blair more times than I can count, the frustration just grew and grew, and the anger grew and grew. And that was many years ago. I can't even imagine what it will be like when this comes, if this comes to fruition. We parents would come from all directions and drive in any possible way to get through that mess. And now you're going to basically increase on that mess. I don't see that improving, I see it getting worse. There's way too much going on in that whole area, from Richmond all the way to Ironbound, Long Hill, that whole area. There's just too much going on. And I don't see, with, starting with the school bus situation, I don't even want to touch that one. So, I wish to ask those that are you in charge in making the decision of building an additional middle school, as well as where you plan to build it, to please go back to the drawing board. As already mentioned, something as simple as drawing up a chart of pros and cons on this issue, using old data, comparing it to the new data, as well as including the wonderful information you have been given by some of the most caring citizens and, yes, brightest minds in James City County, would be the smartest and most courageous thing you could do. We need you to do, put politics aside, possibly think outside the box, and listen to all the viewpoints. Then follow that up with sharing it with the public. Your students, your parents, and the citizens of the county deserve that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Next speaker's card is Barbara Henry. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Barbara Henry, 141 Devon Road. I just have a quick comment. I am in complete and total agreement with the prior speakers. Repurposing James Blair seems to me like bulldozing down an entire house to fix a leaky faucet. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. And I think adding on to our existing schools is the sensible solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to speak to the special use permit? If so, please come forward and state your name and address. John, welcome.
Happy New Year. Mayor Holman, members of City Council, I'm John Whitley, and I live in Skipworth Farms, 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I'm so excited about this venture that it's kind of hard to control my elation. I did say I live in Skipworth Farms. We are contiguous almost with the site of James Blair. The neighbors that I've talked with and through the Neighborhood Association, we're excited that this school will be in the city of Williamsburg and will be accessible to our children. Be accessible and be a landmark of educational excellence. And we, the ones with whom I've spoken, I haven't gone around talking to every single soul, but support is there. As I look at the site, as I look at the education venture, I don't come here without some educational credentials and experience. I've been a middle school principal. I also hold a Masters of Education from the College of William &amp; Mary and a Doctorate from Virginia Tech, each from their respective schools of education. So, I'm not speaking from someone looking at this as a political piece or as some type of alarm factor, as might have been spoken to earlier. I'm looking at it as an educator who believes that this particular proposal, this particular site, sits ready to be the outstanding urban middle school, definitely in our area and possibly in the Commonwealth. It can serve the purpose of bringing to a common setting through the curriculum structure that I'm hearing and feeling that affords exploration, discovery of self and others, and an ideal type of setting. I look at the issue of our children, the children in the city of Williamsburg, who would have to board a bus, or three, or four, or a dozen, in order to move them from our city to accommodate where vacancies might exist. I find that to contribute to environmental pollution and in no way in favor. I do not see, and I have looked probably as closely as others, at the issues related to ingress and egress of the property. The present situation with coming Long Hill into Ironbound, I'd see this as a facilitator force. I also look at it, look at this new school as a prime piece of development for the future of the city of Williamsburg. Not just educationally, but economically, socially, and otherwise. So, I commend, I commend this venture. I commend the thoughtfulness of bringing this to this point and would encourage you to please support the moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and...
May I start with a question? Ms. Shelton, would you be kind enough to remind us what are the criteria that we should be considering relative to a special use permit for this piece of property?
A special use permit is a use of the land. And so, the decision for council today is whether the school on this site is an appropriate use of the land.
Thank you. When I look at the traffic information, both the diagrams and the written information provided, and I compare what is illustrated there to what I see on a regular basis at Berkeley Middle School and at Lafayette High School, I can tell you, this is far better. I've experienced both of the others firsthand. In the morning, in the evening, they function. They're probably not ideal, but they're on very busy roads. Berkeley in particular is a convoluted intersection. It's complicated with very little room for cars to stack, multiple traffic lights, multiple turns in order to get in and out. But it works, and when necessary, they will have a staff person outside to help guide the buses. Lafayette only has one point, in and out, on a very busy road. And the same thing is true. When the buses come out, traffic is stopped, buses are given priority, and it all seems to work. This traffic situation, especially after the road improvements are made, should function far better than either of those. And then, when you consider the potential of taking some of the pressure off of what we currently deal with at Berkeley, to me, that's a step in the right direction. Commercial and residential traffic in this area, whether you are looking at Long Hill Road, Ironbound Road, or Richmond Road, is just a fraction of what we currently have going up and down Monticello, right next to Berkeley. So, the thought that additional traffic generated by the school is somehow going to overwhelm the infrastructure in that area is hard for me to fathom. Even Long Hill Road is pretty busy. And if anybody's tried to drive down Long Hill Road at five o'clock in the evening, or even four o'clock in the evening, and you see the traffic back up to 199 from Old Town, you can appreciate how much volume is there. And yet again, Lafayette works with one way in and one way out for faculty, administration, and students. So, I don't see the traffic being an issue. This site served this entire community as a school for decades. It worked very well. It enabled students to walk and bike to school, which some other locations would not. That takes additional pressure off of the road systems. And so, from the standpoint of whether or not the land use here is appropriate or whether it would create undue pressure on the surrounding neighborhoods or impact the ability of businesses in the area to survive, ask any business owner, the first thing they want is more traffic count. I mean, how many times do we hear that when we discuss Richmond Road or the Northeast Triangle or Second Street? It's how do we, how do we get more people exposed to the businesses in those areas? So, I do have thoughts to share about whether or not this is the best site for a school. I have thoughts to share about whether a fourth middle school is needed. But now's not the time to share those because that's not the question at hand. The question at hand is, is this an appropriate land use for this purpose on this site? And I think it is. Thank you.
Scott?
Can't say anything better than that. But I will add, improving this intersection has been in our CIP for a long time, long before it was certain that it would be a new middle school on this site. This is an opportunity to improve access to public space, public school, but also improve access to valuable commercial portal, its connection with Richmond Road. And through all these sites, it's extremely important. If that intersection doesn't function as it should today, it'd be a vast improvement.
David?
Yeah, I would concur with Vice Mayor Friling and Councilman Foster. You know, I think this is an appropriate site. And that, it's not to take away from any of the points that were made by... any of the points that were made by some of the speakers, you know, some of the questions that were raised, or some of the questions that this body has had in other meetings. And those are questions that we'll have in the future when it comes time to decide how to fund the construction of the school. But to the point of the, whether or not this is the school, the SUP, I think the issue of traffic has been addressed. Mr. Friling, again, used the example that I was going to use, you know, try getting into Berkeley or Lafayette, and even Matthew Welly's a little cumbersome, and so I think what we, what we got proposed by the school administration is a workable plan for this site, and so I would support it.
I can only agree with everything that's been said. The traffic will be better even without whatever we do. We've got to improve that corner, and this is a land use decision, and it is an appropriate place for a school because it's been a school for a very long time, and I think we should go ahead with the land use decision and deal with some of these other issues later.
I concur with that. Any further questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of PCR 15-26, 026.
Second. I have a motion and second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nunez?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
And I want to thank everyone who spoke today also, and I think we will have continued discussion of this going forward.
And could we acknowledge our two school board members are here?
Yes, yeah, we have two school board members here, Kira Cook and Julie Hummel. Thank you very much for being here today along with the central staff that's here today, so thank you very much. Our next public hearing is an extension of a long-term special events permit for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for an ice skating rink located on Duke Gloucester Street. This is proposed Resolution 16-81.
This is an extension of the existing long-term special event license that council approved for Colonial Williamsburg Foundation back in October 8, 2015, which permitted the operation of the ice skating rink and related facilities in Duke Gloucester Street right away. And the request is for an extension through March 15. As this is the first time the ice rink is being operated, the intent of the initial request is that the ice rink would operate through the end of February, and council extended from February 15 to February 29 in the initial public hearing around this request, to allow the rink to be opened through Black History Month and the Let Freedom Ring events that they were coordinating with the Baptist Church, and have this additional opportunity. Well, one of the provisions of the license is that the teardown, breakdown, and restoration of the site also has to occur within that license period. It takes a couple weeks to take it down and restore the site, not a couple hours. And so, once the parties realize this is successful, it's going all the way through the end of February, the additional two weeks for the teardown and restoration of the site were requested, and that's what's being requested here. And I did see Mark Duncan and his counterpart.
Robert Underwood.
Robert Underwood in the audience and are here if you have any additional questions from the applicant.
Terrific. Thank you. Let me turn to staff for any questions. Paul?
I'd just like to note, Mr. Mayor, that as an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I will refrain from discussing this matter and abstain from voting on it.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody else? Again, this seems pretty straightforward. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, I was pleased that Colonial Williamsburg found great success in the, providing the ice skating rink, and it, you know, brought a lot of people to the downtown area, and so extending it, to me, was an easy decision, and glad that it's been successful, and it makes sense that they need time to restore it, so.
I agree.
Yeah. I walk by there several times each day, and I can't tell you the excitement and fun that people are having there. I think it's been a terrific success, so we look forward to next year.
The only thing I've heard from people is, please make it bigger.
Yeah, that's, I'm hearing that, but those discussions will take place. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of proposed Resolution 16-01.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Nunez? Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Abstain.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Our final public hearing is on PCR 15-28. This is Architectural Review Board Membership Revision. This is proposed Ordinance 16-01. Ms. Nesta?
Council discussed this appointment procedure back in November and referred it to Planning Commission for a review and recommendation. The architectural, the Planning Commission's representative on the Architecture Review Board is the only Planning Commission Board or Commission representative that is not appointed by the Chair of Planning Commission, so this change would have this position appointed by the Chair instead of having the Commission recommend to City Council and then have City Council make the appointment. The Commission held its public hearing last month. No one spoke at the hearing. They recommended by a six-o vote that the Architecture Review Section of the zoning ordinance be amended to revise the procedure for appointing Planning Commission's representative to allow it to be done by the Chair of the Commission instead of by City Council. And to implement this recommendation, council would need to approve proposed Ordinance Number 16-01.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions, comments? To streamline things, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Was our idea.
Well, you know, again, it makes sense, you know, given that we appoint all the members of Planning Commission, then, you know, with standard reason, whoever, Planning Commission would appoint to that committee would be, you know, qualified and vetted, so.
And how would we, no better than the Chair of the Planning Commission, who works directly with its membership on a regular basis, which of the members would have the flexibility and time to do it? Because Architectural Review Board can be very time-consuming, in addition to Planning Commission. And which have the necessary skill set to function on that body? For us to have some kind of sway over that, at this time, doesn't make any sense to me.
With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approved proposed Ordinance 16-01.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Nunez? Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank your staff for all the work on these public hearings. Next agenda item are reports. The first is the monthly financial statements. Mr. Collins, anything in particular?
I will be brief and just say that the correct revenues are heading in the right direction up, and the expenses are staying flat, are heading in the right direction down. If you have otherwise questions, the finance director or myself are happy to take them.
Thank you. Any questions? Once a departmental operating reports. Anything in particular to point out?
I'll point out on the operating report on the activity in recreation, I noticed there was a 10% increase in recreation attendance in the reporting month over the previous year. I have an inkling that that might be to the extremely large number of basketball teams we have using our facilities this year. That was reported to you through a weekly correspondence, but I wanted to recognize the Recreation Division for dealing a lot with customer service right now. In addition, the Waller Mill attendance is up for the reporting period. That may have something to do with 70-degree temperatures at the wrong time of year, but it was also surprising because we have the capital improvement project going on at Waller Mill at the same time. But if you have any other questions or observations, I'd be happy to do.
Robert, thank you and your staff for lots of good work. Any questions, comments? Not city manager reports. We have two. The first is the Williamsburg Library chiller replacement.
And on this one, I believe the lead staff is a little bit outside of the city purview in that the head of the library system, Genevieve Owens, is here, and I will handle this issue for us. Thank you, Genevieve.
Genevieve, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you. As Mr. Collins said, I was specifically asked to present on this item to you since it's very much a Williamsburg Regional Library project. That being said, I'm delighted to have Tom Leach here in your chamber as well to answer any specific technical questions that we may have about the project. As you'll note in Mr. Collins's memo, the Williamsburg Library's chiller was installed back in 1997 when the city expanded and renovated the existing Williamsburg Library, and 29 VAV boxes were installed at the exact same time. So here in 2016, we find ourselves at the 19-year mark on that equipment, which is very much the end of its service life. And the reason that it has lasted so well and so long is really due to the careful attention of Williamsburg Library staff members, City of Williamsburg staff members, as well as representatives from DeMuth Train, who service all of our HVAC at the Williamsburg Library. As we contemplated the project, we did not want to go into it and make a recommendation on it solely on the basis of the age of the equipment. We wanted to have some concrete evidence that the equipment is reaching the end of its service life, and we indeed worked with DeMuth Train to pull that data together. We've noted that there are high condenser pressures in one refrigerant circuit on the chiller. There's evidence of worn seals in the compressor. And over the period of March through September of 2015, we tracked excessive numbers of compressor starts and instability in the chilled water temperature. I believe if we were driving an automobile, all of our dashboard lights would be lighting up in that situation with the chiller. Replacing the chiller and the VAV boxes will also have the added benefit of lowering the library's utility bills and the cost of our maintenance contract with DeMuth Train. They, of course, find it far more advantageous to be servicing new equipment rather than aging equipment, which is prone to break down. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project and the recommendation that we proceed with replacing those pieces of equipment.
Perfect. Thank you, Genevieve. And Tom, thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do to keep all our buildings working. You do a terrific job, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would be reticent not to mention that in the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 16, $335,000 was appropriated by council, and the equipment, including installation and training of staff, is at $255,676. That's significantly below budget, which should also be committed.
Thank you.
It's a little scary that our head librarian can speak that much HVAC.
Well, I can read and ten notes. Those are powerful tools.
Let me come back to council for any discussion. I'll manage.
Obviously, if this is understood in advance, we've budgeted for it in the capital improvement plan, could the library hang on for another year or two with the same equipment, possibly? Would that be in the best interest of the many people who use the library or the staff that work there daily? Not really when we're going to have to replace it anyway, so why wait until there's a catastrophic failure that totally inhibits the use of that facility? So that coupled with the $80,000 savings, thank you very much. Everybody who was able to come up with that bid, this makes sense to me.
Scott?
Glad we're in a position to trade in the car while, when the lights turn on.
Judy?
I just have one question. I don't know, you may not know the answer, Genevieve. The one complaint I hear a lot is the noise in the library from the equipment. Will this change, fix that?
Hmm, I can't say that I've heard that complaint about the HVAC systems. I've heard complaints about noise in the library in other respects. Can you maybe tell me a little bit more about the complaint in particular?
Well, this is at the chamber music concerts, which, of course, is strained music.
Right.
And often, the system interferes with the music. It's so loud.
Well, I want to follow up on that particular item if I could, and report back to you on similar complaints that we may have heard from other attendees at those concerts, and certainly, we do not want to have the HVAC system drown out beautiful chamber music.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council award to purchase and installation contract to DeMuth Train for the chiller VAV box replacement at the Williamsburg Library at a cost of
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Nunez? Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Next city manager report is an added item to the agenda, which is the purchase of 1233 Richmond Road.
At the policy direction of council, staff and the broker assigned pursued the purchase of 1233 Richmond Road. The LLC that would be assigning the property to the city did come to an agreement with the owner of the property to purchase the property, and at that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to go through the purchase agreement.
The purchase price of the property is $2,450,000. A $50,000 deposit is required by the contract. There's a 60-day study period that the city has to note any defects in the title or any other problems on the property that would impact the contract, and the expectation is that we would close on the property at the beginning of April. If council is amenable to purchasing the property, then someone on council should make a motion that council approves the purchase of 1233 Richmond Road and authorize the mayor to sign the assignment contract.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Let me come back to council for discussion, comments.
We've talked about this. It's an important piece of property. It's an important area of the city. It's an area that's highlighted on the Economic Development Authority's strategic plan. This seems completely in line with our Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes document, and I think it will hopefully afford a significant redevelopment opportunity.
I had another layer that I've heard more citizen comment about this partial than any other citizen. In fact, it's probably the most recurring comment that I receive, so this is timely movement.
And just to add to that, I think, as I mentioned the other day, the, you know, short of being converted to a full-time residential building, the life cycle of, and the nature of occupancies and where they are today, you know, I think that building as a hotel has probably seen its peak, and I think the city stepping in, given that we have the wherewithal to step in and ultimately demolish this site, will provide for future redevelopment in a way that the city can see benefits for the next, you know, 30, 40 years.
For all those reasons, we need to do this. Finally.
I concur with that. I'll take a motion.
What Chris said. Mr. Mayor, I move the council purchase 1233 Richmond Road and authorize you to sign the letter of.
The assignment of contract.
Assignment of contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Nunez? Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you. I think, again, this is a step in the right direction for Midtown, and for the city, and for economic development possibilities there. Next agenda item are city attorney reports, and we have two, and I believe these are primarily healthkeeping.
Housekeeping. Mr. Phillips and I looked at our PPEA and PPTA guidelines and the state code, and we determined that some revisions were needed. And so he took on that task for me, for which I thank him. He, so first, starting with the PPTA, since that's what's first on your agenda, he rewrote them to streamline them and shorten them.
more simplified, but still keep the requirements of the state code. He updated and revised references, revised submission requirements as provided by the state code. And there is a revised fee structure, which he notes in the memo. 2.5% of the project, $5,000, not, less than $5,000, but not more than $50,000, which is the actual fee of reviewing. And council has the ability to amend those fees at the time of the submission if council desires to do so. And so, this is just to bring our PPTA guidelines up to the requirements of the state code and so the recommendation of staff is that council adopt proposed ordinance 16 oh two.
Any, any questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt ordinance 16 dash 02, accepting the PPTA guidelines, January 2016 revision, in order to reflect the recodification of PPTA as Chapter 18 of Title 33.2 of the Virginia Code and in order to clarify and simplify usage of the PPTA by the city of Williamsburg.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
The other set of guidelines are the PPEA guidelines. Stryker is the most recent example of when those were used. The changes specify in particular that city staff may conduct any review of the projects inside the city or can hire outside consultants if the city determines that that's in the city's best interest. It clarifies the timing and notice requirements. It specifies a fee for actual cost of review of the project of 5%, but not less than $5,000. Again, council can change those fees if council deems it's appropriate to do so based on the size of the project. It revises the code references in the guidelines and adds requirements for inclusion. If someone submits a PPEA submission, they need to provide certain information to the city as part of that submission. So, things like the key individuals who will be working on the project, archaeological impacts of any of the projects, standards of design, additional factors, with suggesting financing proposed by the development team, that it's compatible with the comprehensive plan. They'll need to explain how it, it works with the city's comp plan and design and engineering details. And so, those are the revisions, just a nutshell of the revisions for the PPEA guidelines. Again, this is to bring them into line with the state code and so the staff recommendation is that council adopt proposed ordinance 16 oh three.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt ordinance 16 oh three, accepting the PPEA November 2015 revision, in order to reflect the current PPEA enabling legislation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Jerry, call the roll, please.
Ms. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next agenda item, unfinished business. I believe we have none in the do business. I don't believe so. That brings us to open forum at a time when anyone who wishes to address city council on any issue, who may do so. I have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley. Mr. Shelley, welcome.
Thank you. I am Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I'm appearing here today once again to seek answers to relevant matters of which I've received no response. The issues are not new, but they are legitimate concerns which have been brought to your attention before and you have chosen not to respond to them. In November, I spoke of minutes from a council retreat that were not entered into our public records until I called it to the attention of the clerk of council. These records are vital for the establishment of open and honest government and they are mandated by law. I ask you why council failed to fulfill its responsibility to provide the minutes. In typical fashion, you have not responded. Trust is established only when honest dialogue occurs between citizens and their elected In December, I asked what involvement, if any, did the city have in a lawsuit brought by two William and Mary students against the voter registrar in 2005. This was not the first time that I questioned council about the lawsuit. I'm sure you will remember well, two appearances that I made in April of 2005. Your response at that time, or should I say your behavior, made headlines in the Gazette. "Vice Mayor Lets Fly About Student Rights." You went on a rant. You attacked me on a personal level. But you did not in any way address my concerns regarding the lawsuit. One can't help but wonder if there is something you're trying to hide. You've heard me contend on many occasions that you do not hold yourself accountable or each other accountable. You prove my point when you do not respond. I was heartened by the letter that you sent me in October advising me the changes have been made in our codes compliance office based on concerns that I had and I thanked you for it, even if it took years for you to acknowledge them. It appeared that along with the new city manager, at long last, hope and promise had come to open and honest dialogue. But instead, it now appears that silence is once again your choice of response. I will repeat the concerns that I brought to you at the past two council meetings. Please respond to these concerns. Number one, why weren't minutes provided for the March 4, 2006 council retreat? And two, what involvement, if any, did the city have in the lawsuit brought by two William and Mary students against the Williamsburg voter registrar? Mayor, attack me again if you want, vilify me if you want, but please, please respond to these concerns. Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sheldon, I have a question for you. Could you tell me a little bit about how the registrar is appointed? Who appoints the registrar?
The electoral board.
And who appoints the electoral board?
The, the parties, in this case, the Republican Party and the Democratic Party, depending on which party is holding power at the time.
They, they nominate someone to the circuit judge?
Yes, and the quarter points it.
Who then appoints the board?
The city council has no.
What's the relationship between the city council and the registrar?
The city council has no control over the registrar. The registrar does not answer to the city council. The registrar answers to the electoral board.
Which is appointed by the circuit judge?
That's correct.
On the recommendation of the political parties?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's helpful. Okay, I believe we have a closed session.
Anybody else?
Anyone else on open forum? Didn't see any coming forward.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we do have an item for closed session. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing per subsection 29, the negotiation of a contract including the terms of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
We'll take a three-minute break and come back into closed session.